Business here will be our discussion of the tourism director or the welcome center director or.
Okay, so as we discussed before, our options are leave things kind of as they are, can hire a person who does tourism and manages the welcome, tourism marketing and manage the welcome center, or employ someone to manage the welcome center and contract out the marketing of the city pursuant to our discussion prepared and included, a possible description, job description, if we're just going to do the welcome center option. Because you asked me to do that. The, I don't know how much it would cost, but you know, it's in the thirty to thirty-five thousand range, I would think, to get a full-time employee to manage.
Just a welcome center?
Just a welcome center.
Okay.
We currently spend on marketing, I think I sent this out in an email, thirty-two thousand dollars from the general fund. The co-op grant that we have, our share of that forty thousand dollar grant that we have combined with St. Francis County is twenty thousand dollars.
And is that the, is that the grant that because we don't have a tourism director, we're in jeopardy of losing?
Received an email suggesting that without a full-time.
Tourism director.
Person.
We will lose that.
Won't be able to spend that advertising money. And then the tourism tax generates an average of twenty-four thousand dollars a year that goes to marketing. Now, they're gonna, the tourism tax commission will continue to do their thing regardless of the decision that's made here tonight. But when I first got here, the tourism tax commission was kind of, the only thing they had to do with city government was the, they met here, kept their own tax, their own checkbook and made their own expenditures and decisions on how to spend that money. With some kind of realignment of things, they agreed that it was wise to have the city's financial management system account for those expenditures and have it be audited annually as the city audit is done, and to coordinate their expenditures with the marketing program that is going through the tourism department. And with a few glitches here and there, that's worked, worked well. Without having a marketing person to coordinate with them, attend their meetings and make presentations and options to them, it might, might be a bit of a disconnect because I'm not, professional marketing company will advise us on how to spend our money, but won't necessarily coordinate in public meetings with people to discuss options. So I think that's a factor for your consideration. The money we spend for, you have to pay a company their commission or fee for marketing, of course, counterbalancing that is, the money you'd be saving in personnel, not funding the dual position as a full-time position.
If we were to do something like that, would that, that still wouldn't fit our requirement to be eligible for that grant, right?
I can't, I can't answer that question. It's possible that they would view the full-time tourism, the facility, the welcome center manager as being a full-time tourism position, but since that person won't be responsible for the grant, it's also possible they would not. I can conceive of both possibilities.
Is there any way for us to find out?
Uh, I can ask.
Because that email asked for us to let them know what we intend to do, so if we present them with the options we are considering, we can get some sort of input.
That could help with our decision.
And do we have any idea how much, I mean, we got this new job description, but we don't really have any idea how far whatever amount we allocate towards marketing.
You, I'm sorry.
Would go with a, with a marketing firm. We don't know what we could get.
How much did they charge us? Is that what you asked?
Right, we don't have any, any proposals from any firms, is that correct?
No, I think it's premature, you need to send out proposals until you've kind of decided that you're ready to proceed. But you know, you're gonna lose, well, again, it's a small, for a marketing company, it's not a very big contract. So I don't think the normal percentage fee is going to apply here, they're gonna want a fixed fee. And I, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar, seventy-six thousand dollar contract, I can certainly see them taking more than ten percent of that, twelve percent of that probably.
Just for clarification, can you expand on the difference between the tourism tax commission and the tourism advisory council?
Yes.
It's mostly the same members, right?
When, when it was decided, when the voters approved the tourism tax.
Lodging tax.
Lodging tax. The statute that enables the city to do that requires that there be a tourism tax commission independent of city government, who are the stewards of that money, so that they get to decide how that money is spent and are responsible for the outcome, not the outcome, but they're responsible to account for it at the, at the end of the day. And the fact that they allowed the city to put that through our financial management systems kind of addresses the accountability problem. But, but they're independent, now their members are appointed, but once appointed, they are not beholden to the mayor or the board of all of them, they're independent. When I got here, there was a group meeting called the Tourism Advisory Council. They were just kind of loosely agreed to come together to consider things having to do with tourism. I wrote them a set of bylaws, which they currently abide by, and we amended the board, the ordinance to allow the mayor to appoint standing committees, because there was no provision in the ordinance for that, therefore, they didn't really exist, they didn't have any status in the city code. So we amended the code to allow the mayor to appoint standing committees, and the first committee he appointed was the Tourism Advisory Council. And their, their bylaws say that they're responsible for advising the city on marketing for tourism, and that has been what they have been doing. And Sandra, you know, would present ideas to them, and as she does to the tax commission or did to the tax commission, and they would say, do that, don't do that, let's buy this, you know, they've done a good job of doing two things, one is making those decisions. For me, and I'm doing a bit of a lecture here, having the Tourism Advisory Council creates kind of political legitimacy for the tourism program. So it's, it's not, it's not the politicians' program, it's not the directors' program, it's not the city administrators' program, it's the program of the stakeholders in tourism. And, and so I think that, aside from the good advice we get, that kind of political legitimacy is important, if you're gonna spend dollars on tourism, the general, general revenue funds on tourism.
And where I'm getting at from that, or by asking that, is, is there anything that precludes us from contributing to either one of those, like, marketing money, instead of it going through like the welcome center, if we weren't going to have a tourism director down there and we still wanted to support marketing and advertising? We wouldn't technically be able to give it to the tax commission, you know, because they're only charged with the lodging tax, correct?
Yes. And if you decide to pursue that, my recommendation would be to engage the Tourism Advisory Council in consulting with whoever we contract for marketing, because they need the local input.
Right.
The marketing company from St. Louis or Cape or wherever doesn't have a sense of what St. Genevieve is, and I think that Tourism Advisory Council could help provide that and keep them on track.
But theoretically, their only responsibility is the lodging tax and how.
Tax commissions.
The tax, yes. So if we were going to, I mean, we don't have any authority to put any money into the tax commission to help them with their efforts, but we could do it for the Tourism Advisory Commission?
Tourism Advisory Council.
Our council.
Advises the city on the expenditure of the money you put in the budget to be spent for marketing.
Okay.
So we already have that relationship.
All right.
I have one comment, and then I have a question. The position description you got on a welcome center does pretty good the first two pages, and the last page is all over tourism. I thought we were separating those out.
That's my question.
And which brings my question to, maybe you need to explain the difference between tourism and marketing?
Marketing is the decision to use dollars to buy media, whether it's print media or radio or whatever, that people read, see, or hear in an attempt to attract them to the city. That's marketing.
Okay.
Then you have to be able to accommodate them when they get here. That's the welcome center. So you can't segregate the tourism welcome center manager from dealing with the folks that get here and making sure when they get here, they have the information they need to have a successful visit and want to come back. That's why that's written that way. Who's gonna do that?
That wasn't the way I thought we were going.
Well, you can decide, this is on the table for your consideration.
Martin, try to get the full picture of the cost, you know, that we've incurred, you had a, in that email, a sixty-three thousand, two hundred dollar salary plus eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars in benefits. The last number seems off the line, because I thought her line item.
Was twenty.
Was twenty-two thousand just for insurance.
Yeah.
It was.
For, for the tourism?
Director.
Director.
Right.
Oh, which is the twenty-five percent benefit factor.
Oh, that's thirty percent.
Is that for all, all employees?
Well, we only had one full-time employee.
So I gotta think, like, I don't think we have to pay.
Oh, I, I don't know, that's just the way it was listed.
Yeah, I think that's for all, all employees.
But in going through the, basically the bill register, I see other bills in there for Delta Dental and other things like that, are all of those figures in this eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollar, or is there in addition to this, there's more benefits that we're paying?
This includes, the Delta Dental is, employees pay through the city. So it doesn't include dental insurance or vision insurance.
Oh, so that's reimbursed by the employee.
Right.
And is there any other like items like that, or?
Life insurance, additional life insurance, we provide a small policy, but you can, like, they act like a supplement.
Health insurance.
They have other supplements they can buy.
Right, but those are all reimbursed expenses.
Comes pre-tax off there.
Right, okay. So this thirty-five thousand dollar salary that you talked about earlier and stuff, that would not include benefits, right?
No, that would just be the pay, you have to add, it's only about thirty percent.
Right. Thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Plus. Yeah, I'm like Jimmy, I'm a little confused over where one line was drawn and one stopped, you know, from a facility manager to a, you know, because even in your job description here, I mean, it talks about, you know, meeting with other organizations and it even uses tourism in there a few times, too.
You're gonna be meeting, you gotta understand that, that's the, the level we're in downtown and in tourism is, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this big thing now. Now it's because of what's happened with the National Park Service and the dames, now we, we've even created a bigger, it's gonna be kind of a mess, and there's gonna have to be somebody trying to bring all this together. Because you have, now you have, you're gonna have the Park Service coming in with properties to show, you already have the foundation and their properties to show, you got the state on their end with properties to show, and now, now you still, now you still have the dames with properties to show, you've got four different places, and it's, and every one of those, there's, somebody's gonna have to be directed, somebody, somebody's gonna come into town, and where do I go from here? And, and I'm sure that every one of those entities would, they would wanna, they're gonna, well, here's where you need to stay, you know, here's where you need to be, and this is, this just, the whole thing is much more complicated now.
Right.
And who's gonna suffer, I think, on the end of this, is tourists. They're gonna come into town, and now because of the national park, we're gonna, we're gonna have more tourists coming in, we're gonna have more people coming into this city, and we better do a really fine job of taking care of them, because if we talk about economic development, we know there's nothing going on around us, but this is, is one place where we could, we'll have some economic development.
Yeah, I agree.
And I know, and is it totally our responsibility? Well, there's some other entities that could help out with this, and I hope they do, but I haven't had much, I don't have a real good feeling about that yet.
Right.
You know, but.
Never know.
And as we do this, and I'm looking at this whole thing.
He did.
I'm looking at this big picture right now, and, and yeah, we can, we can do that, and what Martin has done here, when it's somebody at the welcome center, that person is, is gonna be, is gonna be directed to the, to the Jamie Valley House or the Park Service, they're gonna be up there to the Ybor Valley House, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
Who's gonna coordinate bus tours?
There's another thing, that buses come into this town.
You've got that in here.
Should, should that be a city responsibility?
That's the question for you.
Look, they're, they're coming there, I think it's.
I feel as if, in my own personal opinion, that there's a lot of things on here that it's just not really necessarily a city's responsibility. I, I see the value of there being a centralized location to do that, but I'm just not too sure, coming off the city's payroll, if that's something that, you know, the taxpayer should be paying for.
Well, I think, Brian, you, do, do we not benefit from the tourists coming into this town?
Well, sure.
And are we not, is St. Genevieve, is St. Genevieve a tourist destination?
But is it a, is it a government's responsibility to provide tourist services? I mean, just because it benefits from, it doesn't, it's coming from, we don't have a viable way of being able to prove that this is a money-making, we've already said that it's not a money-making operation, so, so do we, is it the city's responsibility to lose money on something such as coordinated tourists or bus tours or, you know, it's, I'm, I don't, I'll admit, I don't have a solution for that, I don't have a, an end-all be-all here, I'm not too sure if there, you know, these, these organizations, I've mentioned it before, downtown can work together to, to, you know, have a organization to create, I don't know, I'm brainstorming here, but, but you get what I'm saying? I personally don't feel as if it is a government's responsibility to, to do something like that. I don't know if that's the right wording or not, I don't know if it's one hundred percent government's responsibility to fund that, but, and that's why I asked, you know, the last meeting and stuff, if we could get some help, I mean, we're asked as the city to help fund other organizations, but then yet, why can't we go around and ask other organizations to help fund this? That's my whole point, and so we're asked by how many to contribute, and, but then yet, we go knocking on somebody's door and we obviously don't get too favorable an answer, but I'm not sure.
Explain where we're at with the colonial dames and all that, I, I thought the email said everybody had an agreement now, is that not true?
The, the agreement, originally, the, when this all started with the Park Services, the Park Service were needing five properties to establish a national park, that's where it came to.
Right.
So they've been in talks for the last year with the, with the dames, and they had, they thought they had an understanding where, where the dames were going to donate five of their properties to the Park Service, and the Park Service would take them off their hands and take care of the maintenance, and that would have established a park. What has happened now is the, there's a group here that, and probably Bob could probably explain this a little better than me, but anyhow, there's a group here in St. Genevieve of local dames that, that ran, they set up and ran the, their little welcome, their little museum down there, and the Bull Duke House and the Neo House across the road, and what has happened, they've, they've talked the dames in St. Louis to donate the properties to them, so they can continue to do what they're doing with, and I don't know where they're gonna get their money to do it, but apparently they have some donations or whatever, so they're gonna be, they set themselves apart. So it's gonna be, they're gonna have houses to tour, the Park Service is gonna have houses to tour, we've already got other places to tour, so it's, it's.
See, and that brings me to the point that Brian said, why should we take care of the colonial dames?
We're not taking care of the colonial dames.
Well, if you're, if you're directing buses and doing all that, you are.
We're taking care of people that are coming to town that are tourists, you know, and directing, yeah, we are, we're doing some directing.
Yes, we are.
Assisting.
Assisting.
Go ahead.
Why?
I just wanted to touch on something that Bryant said, I think it's, it's about a lot more than, is this making the city money, is the city losing money? We have this resolution that the Tourism Advisory Council sent, and it lists all the other benefits, there are a lot more benefits.
Well, I would argue that most of these benefits on here were there before this department was ever established.
Exactly.
So although I certainly see the, how tourism can benefit to that, to me, when, when we talk about does tourism benefit, and I, I know we're kind of a broken record here, because we continue, we're talking about this in budget time, too, but is it, is it really benefiting the taxpayer dollars if it's losing money? It's surely just bringing people in, and it's, and it's benefiting to, to the cities that it's bringing here, but overall, the, the whole community, is it benefiting the entire city in the sense of, is it wasting taxpayer dollars?
I don't think it is, I think it creates jobs, it increases property values, it gives our neighborhood's character, there are other benefits.
The, the neighborhood, the neighborhood character was already there, the property value.
Bryant, I don't know about you.
It's, it's the, the preservation of the culture was down there, the, you know, there is.
I think that things have changed quite a bit the last few years, and a lot of that is, has been benefit because of tourism. There have been, downtown is much nicer than it used to be, and that's thanks to a lot of hard work from a lot of people, and a lot of that is to help attract people to our community.
Do, what are the, I know this is something Sandra was, was keeping track of, what are the, the numbers as far as, you know, of tourism, of people coming into the welcome center, you know, ten years ago, I know we didn't have those numbers before, but when this was created, you know, does, does anybody have those numbers by chance? And then, you know, there, there's been.
There was some years missing.
Proof here, there's been evidence that's been proven here that, you know, that Joe's laid out here, that it doesn't benefit much, I mean, to put it in perspective, we, we talked about how tourism is, is down this year because of the flooding, but our, our final tax dollars are flat, so it didn't seem to be affected by that. So it's, it's just hard for me to, to be okay with putting money into something that's, in my opinion, not benefiting because it's losing money.
Could, could we maybe hear from some citizens? I don't think, I don't think anything I have to say.
I mean, Sarah, and Sarah's here.
Yeah.
I would be glad to, yeah. My name is Sarah Menard, and I am the chairman of the Tourism Advisory Council, and I think you all have a copy of the resolution. And so our advice is that you continue to fund the welcome center, staff the welcome center, and have a director of tourism. And I appreciate that you have to be stewards of the money, and you have a really difficult job, but I think we have to recognize that tourists are going to come to town, and yeah, it is the job of government to provide some services, they're gonna need streets, they're gonna need parking lots, and they're gonna need all of those other things that are tied up with tourism, so when they get here, they need services, they need restrooms, they need places to eat, they need places to get direction. And so I think directing a bus tour is a function of a tourism director or welcome center, and, and our advice is that you need to keep doing it. If you have any questions, I don't know, there are other members of the Tourism Advisory Council here, and I don't know that we have any answers, except that I think it's, it is, I think it is a truism, I don't know that we can prove it now, but we're going to have an increased amount of tourism. I can see that in five years, parking's gonna be a huge problem in downtown St. Genevieve, it's almost a problem now. And there are some other things that are gonna be problems, signage is kind of a problem, we need signs to direct people, especially if we're not gonna have a human direct them, we need better signage, and those things, we're not gonna see those changes overnight, but we are going to see them.
Sarah, one question and stuff, you know, as far as the tourism board's opinion, do you think it's wrong for this city board to ask for help in funding this?
No, I think there may be a lot of creative ways that we could, we could make this happen.
And is the board willing to help us find?
I think yes, yes. But we can't, I mean, if there's, if nothing, if there's no platform to start with, we can't, we can't help.
I go back to six months ago, a year ago, everybody was saying, this federal deal, that's gonna be the best thing. Now we're not there, right?
We're, we're well on our way. It's Jimmy, it's the federal government, you know, it's even the city government, it takes forever to get anything done, you know, so that's what, there's where we're at.
But it was gonna be a combination of this and that, and now we only got one piece left.
Jimmy, I'm telling you right now, they've put all their eggs in one basket, and they, for lack, I don't know how to say this, but they messed up. So now we're regrouping, and I think now they're, they're going, and they're, they know what they're gonna do, there's some meetings next week, they're, Senator Blunt told me personally that this thing is gonna get done, and we're well on our way. So I, and I, I have faith that it's gonna happen.
What's gonna get done?
This national park, it's gonna get, and already, we have a director right now, that director is gonna be moving into this community, and by, I would think by the end of January or the beginning of February, there's gonna be somebody from the Park Service living in this community, so the communication's gonna get better, seeing people's gonna get better, so yeah, it's gonna go.
Do we know where his office is gonna be?
His office right now, what I understand is, I've offered him, and I've offered the Park Service part of the welcome center, thought it'd be a good mix, they're considering that. Now they have a property right across the street from the welcome center, they're gonna have, maybe he puts himself an office in there, but there's a lot of work to be done, so I don't know. Whenever they do come down, they're down there, they're at the welcome center, yes, yes, sir.
I would just like to say, I would like to. I would just like to say, I would like to encourage you to maybe change your mindset, and not think about it as losing money, but thinking about it as spending money on services. You know, you don't, you spend money on, you have to spend money. You have to spend money on roads and parks, and I wouldn't, just stop thinking of it as losing money, think of it as spending money.
I think that's a good way to look at it.
I would kind of comment on that. I appreciate that, but in my opinion, it is, I don't believe that's, there's certain services that the government should provide, such as protection, you know, one's right, so that's why we have to fire the police, and then infrastructure, and of that sort, but, you know, I would argue that this is something that, that as the government in general shouldn't be, have at hand, that this should be more of a free market thing, that the businesses come together, and communities come together. Of course, in today's society nowadays, we're steering further away from that. But I will say, as we kind of, that's irrelevant to the scenario, because that's, we're just beating a dead horse. So, really what needs to happen is, for us, we want to determine a salary, and we determine where we want to go, so does anybody have any options or ideas on what they want to keep the, this the same, or do we want to change it, or
I think we got to decide.
What do we want to do here?
I think we got to decide first if we're going to hire just a, thank you, Sarah, a Welcome Center Director, or we're going to hire somebody to continue to direct the funds from tourism and run the Welcome Center, be one person, or hire a Welcome Center Director, and then market out, and hire a marketing firm for the rest of it.
If we do that, are the, because the marketing firm's not going to coordinate all these tours
No, they're just, no.
And stuff like that, so that's going to need to be, no matter what, we need to determine what's going to be the option there. Is that something, you know?
But if you're, yeah, that's off the table, if we hire somebody for just tourism, and one of the things, this person is not going to be, Sandra had a dual role with economic development, that's not going to be, we're going to have a tourism, somebody directing tourism, not economic development. My idea of economic development is that, that's a countywide thing, and I've already talked to the commissioners, the IDC Board, the Chamber, this needs to be, you want to hire somebody, you hire somebody, not us necessarily, but it's important, but here's an opportunity with economic development within our little community, you know, so
And that economic development, if I understand it correctly, would be where the other people and organizations can help contribute?
Well, no, I think that's the community, that's your Chamber, your IDC Board
Right, that's what I meant.
Your county.
Right.
Everybody's in that.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, for the whole, the economy of the whole region.
Right, that's what I meant.
Yes, sir.
Okay, back to the disposition description, we've got tourism in there. How much of this whole Welcome Center Director, whatever, how much of their time is it going to spend tourism, how much is it? That's always, you know, and how do we evaluate? You know, this is a problem I've had the last two years, how do you evaluate what this person does at the end of the year? Good job, bad job? How do we do that? Has that, that's been a problem from day one with me?
I think is the way Sandra did it, she had key people in the Welcome Center that she trained, and they always were in the process of training. I think, Mickey, you work part-time down there at the Welcome Center, and those folks, you train those folks to take care of the face-to-face that come in, and then Sandra, that person would direct when a tour bus would come into town, and she also directed the funds of the, you know, what we're going to market, because she was at the, that's, somebody's got to be it, she was at the TAC meetings, the TTC meetings, so, Giordano Fett, all these meetings that come into town, you know, that did that, so.
Arguably, you know, we don't have to have someone as involved as Sandra was, right?
I'd like to see it kind of spelled out, 80, 20, 60, 40, I mean, you know, I mean
I don't know if you need to do that.
I can't envision hiring somebody who's only going to turn on the lights.
Well, I'm not saying that, but you also got to have that person saying, well, I devoted 99% of my time to tourism, I don't have time to do the Welcome Center either.
Well, what is the Welcome Center except for tourists? And we'll see how you can segregate them.
And I don't, I don't think we'd be doing ourselves a service if we try and find somebody, quite honestly, this is a pretty, this is a three-page job description.
Yeah, it's a lot longer than Sandra's.
And I don't think that we can find somebody
It is long, and it needs to be pared down significantly, but I didn't want to take anything off
Right, but I don't think we can, we can find somebody in the 30 to 32 or $35,000 range
To do it well.
To do it well. And I think we should keep the marketing in it and keep the old job description, maybe change it a little.
I concur. I think economic development can be separate or spun off, but I definitely, I definitely think that we need to keep with it as it was.
I don't think there's any point in trying to hire a firm who's not going to really understand who we are as a city and what we're trying to do.
Or interact or integrate any activities.
Basically, going to get somebody that's just going to spend money on ads.
They're going to give you a cookie cutter format
And they're not going to pay attention to us because we're such low, we're such low money. We're not going to get any love.
Might seem irrelevant, but it kind of does and stuff, and you go back to these dames and stuff, evidently they've split off into a smaller organization from the bigger organization.
Yes, they have, they've got an LLC. Well, I tell you, Jeff's here, can you explain what your organization is now?
Okay.
Do you want to make it?
Do you want me to?
Okay. Yes. First of all, introduce yourself, Jeff.
Okay, my name is Jeff Triliano, I'm the Director of French Colonial America, which for the last two years, we've been the organization that the dames contracted with to manage and do the programming at their site, the five historic buildings and the center, the building that opened up a couple of years ago. And it was, it's a separate 501(c)(3) that was created with dame involvement, there are members of the dames on the board, and it was just the idea that they needed, they felt the need to get things moved to the next level with the site, and professionalize the operation. And it got to the point as, you know, in the last few years, we made a lot of progress, got the new building, got new programming going, we have last year doubled attendance and made a lot of progress, but the dames got to the point where they felt they wanted to both try to help support in some way the creation of the National Park Service park here, but they also decided they wanted to continue the direction that things were going. So, what has now happened is that they decided to give the Schramm's Old House, Jean-Baptiste Valley, to the Park Service, you know, it's probably, it's a real treasure, it's, Bob, safe to say it's one of the most, if not, in many ways, the most nationally significant historic building in the town, given the last
It's invisible.
Yeah. Yeah, highly visible, helped get the park established, but also to continue what has been accomplished in the direction that things have been going with the rest of the site, so, it's, you know, the dame stepped away from managing along, you know, some time ago, and French Colonial America is going to continue being here, and is going to be continuing and working on trying to do a better job of cooperating and being part of the, part of the mix. So, we'll do the best we can, and that, does that help explain?
So, you obviously have a plan in place to market your organization here?
Market and fundraise, yes.
Okay, so a lot of what the city's doing at the Welcome Center directly affects your organization?
What everybody does here affects each other.
Right.
It kind of goes back to the thing of, you know, we're in an increasingly competitive environment for these kinds of functions, heritage tourism, world is changing, we have to keep advancing, and we have to keep working to get people's attention. In general, historic sites, heritage tourism sites are seeing a decline in attendance around the country, and we are, as I've always said, we're much stronger together collectively, create a critical mass here of what is going to appeal to people, catch their attention, and give them a reason to come here. We're stronger together.
And then, one thing about it now, I just happened to see this tonight on the TV with the National Park Service, there was a PBS special, and the ranger was talking, and he was at Denali, the Park Service, when they come in, the Park Service is here, they say that they're here forever. No matter what happens, if his funding falls through and dies out, what the Park Service, their funding is, well, they're, they've got quite a bit of funds, and they're into a spot forever, and to preserve the history of that spot, and that's, that's an honor here in this city to even think about that, that 500 years from now, Lord willing, that this is going to be preserved and taught for 500 years, no matter what, because that's the way they do business, you know, and quite frankly, all the rest of us, we could, there's, things could happen that we couldn't do that, so. That's an investment, that's an investment the federal government is making in this community, and boy, it's quite, it's quite an investment, you know? And it's going to help us.
And this is a unique story that nobody else really tells quite as well as, that all the groups, and the Park Service will be part of that, that it's a great place, a unique place to tell a very special story that most people are familiar with. So, and that goes back to the thing of marketing, how do you get people to take the time to come and see something? One of the things that's a reality now for museums is that people don't have as much time as they used to, especially families, you know? The kids all got a, you know, taekwondo and soccer, and in between the swimming lessons and everything, people don't have time to do everything that they would like to do, so you've really got to catch their attention, and you really got to give them a critical mass of attractions to make the effort to come, but you got to tell them about it, you can't do the, keep the candle under the proverbial basket.
All right, in spite of Tom, I think
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think, I think in concert with what the gentleman said, and with what our tourism, our TAC recommended, I think, and as we try to get others involved to work with us, with economic development, et cetera, I think that we should give Martin the marching orders to move forward and find a Director of Tourism, just like the position we had before.
I disagree.
That's fine, but let's come to consensus, make a decision, and move forward.
I don't have a problem with combining the tourism with the Welcome Center manager, I think the salary is pretty accurate on what Martin said.
Yeah, that's how we, I don't think you're going to
You're not going to get anybody to do it well for that amount of work.
How do you know that?
We haven't looked yet.
Oh, my goodness, Bob, come on. All right, so how do we move forward on this? What do we do?
Well, I agree, I think we're, we could talk about this till the Congress
Well, you made a motion, I guess.
I make a motion.
I second, I second that.
You said, come to a consensus, I don't
Right. I just think we need to move forward on this and stop talking about it, and move forward. And I know what everybody's going to say, I've heard it before, so please, let's decide and move forward. I make a motion to have Martin post for and hire a Tourism Director for the City of St. Genevieve, as was already accomplished by the previous employee.
At the current salary.
I honestly think, you're not going to, I agree with him on that sense
And Martin just got one saying
You're not going to want to do it well for $38,000, maybe not $60,000.
And Martin just got said perhaps less than $60,000.
It doesn't have to be 60, though. Well, no, not necessarily, but
And Gary, your urgency is what? Meaning, would we even have an opportunity to explore a contract model? I know that's not popular, but I mean, to me, it's a piece of information I'd like to maybe evaluate. I'm not saying I'm leaning that way, I just don't know.
I thought we were coming into this work session with a little more information.
Right.
And so, I'm a little disappointed that we don't, we can't, I don't feel like we have enough information to make a decision, except for what we already know and what we, the position we've already had.
Well
We have a position open, we need to fill it, we need to decide.
But does that decision need to come immediately, or?
We're already losing out on the grant money.
We need to hire someone.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree.
So, do you second it? Can we move forward on this?
I did second it, yes.
What, do you need us to vote?
This is a work session, yeah.
Okay, so then, what do we do then?
Well, if, but if he's trying to get an idea of, if we're trying to come to a consensus, then we're probably going to need to vote on it, because it's
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to grasp here who's where.
All right, then let's put it out there.
Even if it's not a formal vote or a motion, I mean, he needs to know what to do, so
We have two votes for a tourism, hiring a tourism, putting out for hire a Tourism Director.
Before I do that
That's the whole thing
Listen, Martin
I'm going to seek, I'm going to see what the market is
Yes.
To determine what an appropriate salary is.
Okay, go ahead.
We're just out, we're exploring that option with that, you know, we're, he's not, he's not going to hire anybody without this board's approval. You're going to have to approve anybody.
So, you are going to bring it back to the board?
Really?
Technically
Technically, you don't have to do that.
Technically, he does. Technically, he does.
Right, that's the whole disagreement here.
I've had this argument before.
Yeah, right.
If you go read our code book, it says salaries will be set by the Board of Order.
Let's not go down there again and stuff
Then we have our input at that point.
Sure, sure.
Just bring it in front of the board.
May we move forward, though, and let him start looking for the information, and do his due diligence to get us somebody in there?
Yes.
I think so.
So, yes?
Yes.
There's four yeses.
No. I'd like to know more, I mean, I can
Yes or no?
I can sign up with a yes. No.
I'm going to say no.
Then it goes.
It's five to three. So, we have a clear understanding of what we're, do you have a clear understanding of what we're doing here?
I'm going to put together an advertisement for a position, and before I run it, I'm going to consult with you on what I have found out is a salary range that seems to be the appropriate range for the market, and we'll find out.
For the job description of Tourism Director.
For a community of comparable size.
Right, exactly.
Can I ask a question real quick? During our last 45 minutes of discussion, we had talked about working with the Tourism Advisory Council and the Tourism Tax Commission and other organizations to help come up with ideas, and now we jumped right into
Exactly.
Making, I mean, we just asked Ms. Menard if they would offer to help us with this, and now we're throwing that out the window, she offered to help, her organization offered to help.
No, 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 all we're asking them to do is to stop moving forward, looking for someone, we can still work with everybody, plus these players to help us with economic development, we're not closing doors
We're going to look for something that we don't have a set
We are moving forward, because we can't sit here in these debates and not hire somebody to run that place.
We haven't set a salary, we haven't
Fine, then let's have that conversation, but let's get this ball rolling.
But Joe, do you ever watch the meetings, the TTC or TAC meetings?
I have watched some, yes.
Okay, so that, both of those groups work pretty closely with the Director of Tourism. It is a very collaborative effort, I think that if we were finding a new Director of Tourism, that that would continue.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't really see how that
I'm good, I just want to get moving on.
I think that the resolution that the TAC sent us is in support of what we're recommending Martin do, and even if there are some changes, then once that person is in place, we could certainly, they can certainly look at making those changes. And I would glad, since I'm the liaison, I'll gladly report on that.
I voted yes, basically, because of the fact I thought we were going to collectively work together.
Indeed. That's my understanding as well.
You know, with whatever organization, I think that's the way to go.
That's my understanding too, Bob.
My thoughts on this, what Sarah said was that we needed a Tourism Director, that was her comment, is that not correct?
And that was in concert with the dames
Yeah.
And the other, the other organizations.
Well, what's the timeframe we're looking at here, best case scenario, Martin? If you're moving forward here?
To get somebody? Spring, I mean, I mean
To have that information to us, so we can make a decision.
Yeah, just in general, because I mean, it's obviously not going to happen this month, because we don't have another meeting.
Well, I mean, I get the information to you by email.
Yeah.
Bryant, I'm confused, you made a comment just a minute ago that we can't get anybody less than $63,000, but then yet then yet you voted no.
Do what?
You made.
No, I said, you're not going to find someone to do everything on that list for $35,000.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
That's, that's what the point they were trying to get across, and I was agreeing with them on. No, you know, you, I think, I think there's a.
Wiggle room.
Wiggle room there.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, 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 I'm under the belief that I think it should be cut back, but, yeah, I'm just trying to move forward here as, as, as Gary over there is also trying to do, so I'm just trying to move forward and then just, just go from there.
So, because we're talking about an $80-plus-thousand-dollar-cost position.
Exactly.
You know, almost 40% of the Welcome Center's budget.
I'll be, I'll be very interested to see.
And, and, and we're losing money, so.
Get Terry to watch the car there. That's just, that's a, you know, I belong to the City Managers Association, lists or city managers all over the, the administrators all over the state. I can put out an email to get a response from them, plus I can identify, because not everybody responds to those things.
You know, one thing that.
Other areas where there is a tourism director, by contacting the Department of Tourism. At the state, they'll tell me who's where and not.
One thing that troubled me with this whole debate, and we've had it, you know, with, we've been talking tourism now, and, and, you know, I, I've seen and watched this, and it, it's just, drugs accord with me that it's been 10 to 1, people coming into these chambers for tourism, 10 to 1. We were, I mean, there's been one or two people come in that has, and maybe they're talking to you guys, I don't know. I haven't had anybody talk to me against it. But we've, we've fallen, I remember back when we had the meeting with the, we've invited the people in about the, the deal with the cars. My goodness, the board heard it well, but for some reason, I don't understand why we're not, we're not hearing that number.
Well, I would say that the opposition always speaks up quite a bit. We'll, we'll go back, the, the prime example here is, I would say that, we'll go back to the planning and zoning meeting with the Meadow, Meadow marijuana facility. There was all kinds of people here to speak against it. There was a couple that spoke up for it, but it was a ratio very similar, more like a 10 to, 10 to 2, you know, 10 people against it, 2 people for it, but you see all over Facebook, there's plenty of people for it. So, I mean, the opposition always speaks up more than, than, than the people who would be, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, so, but then, like, another example, the billboard. I had several people, of course, I wasn't on the board at this time, but talking to me about, you know, the positives, and was loving to see that thing come in here, but all you heard was, was negatives in here, and so it didn't get through. So it's, to kind of say that I see your point, but there's.
They've come into these chambers and spoken for tourism.
Right.
And, I mean, and there's not very many people that's come and said, we don't, you know, and for me, I, you know, we say, and I hate to hear that term too, we're losing money. I, I don't think you're losing. I think, I think what you have right now is, is, is pretty, pretty darn good, and all you have to do is spend some time down there and, and think about the people that are volunteering their time. There's a lot of volunteers that make all this work together because they want to be a part of something bigger than themselves, so, but either way, I just.
So what's the list of organizations the next time we meet to discuss this position that's going to be here? I want them all, IDC, Chamber.
That was for the economic development.
Yeah, that's not, they're not, they're not going to support, that's economic development.
I thought you were just going to combine it just like it was.
No, we're not, the economic development is not going to be tourism.
No, that's not what I said. On the record, I said spinning off economic development.
We're not going to have that, this, our tourism director's not going to be.
I, on the record, go watch the video. You go watch that video, I told you to spin.
Yeah, no, that's not what he said. We're, that's separated. We talked about that.
It's going to be a separate call.
It's not an invalid argument, though, because right here in this job description, they mention wineries, tiger sanctuaries, golf, water park, those are areas that are located outside of city limits, so this is not a two-dimensional issue. I don't think anybody could really effectively, well, continue to argue that the city's going to provide services of some kind, the city's obligated to do that. This, I think we defer, this is one of those services, I think, but it's how we fund it, and it's how, what assistance can we get? So it, on, it's not a flat issue, yes or no, black or white, it's, it's a much bigger issue. Who can we get support from? Who can we partner with? Because if those people are listening and watching this meeting, certainly, they're getting the benefit of what our efforts are tonight, so we should be able to count on them and lean on them.
You know, one number that would come to mind concerning that and stuff, is there any way we can know what the sales tax figures are for St. Jen County? And I know we can for St. Jen City, but, you know, there's got to be numbers in there that are attainable from this.
Yes, so that's public information. But isn't public information is what individual taxpayers contribute to the, to the total?
Oh, I just want the totals and stuff, because right there you can tell how much is the businesses out in the county that may be a direct benefit of tourism.
You kind of have to do what we do, identify tourism-sensitive businesses.
Right.
And see kind of what their revenues are.
That's the ones we want to know about.
We have about five minutes, about five minutes before the.
Are we going to continue this?
Yes, afterwards, we're, we're not going to continue this discussion on tourism.
Not the tourism, the second portion of it, yes.
The second portion after our, our meeting, we will continue our work session on the other topic. Okay? So we'll take five minutes, we've got five minutes to take a break and.
Gary, you're going to take your break.
Oh, man, I'm good. I'm just getting warmed up, baby. Just getting warmed up.
What you said, were you going to keep the same position description? That's what you said. Economic development, is it?
I, I stip.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Wolfman.
Here.
Mayor Weal Quorm.
Thank you. Move for approval in agenda. Move through. Second, in favor?
Aye.
Takes us down to a personal appearance by Officer Kristy Clark, while you're up early.
Okay, so I wanted to come and talk tonight to see if we could maybe change, add some wording to one of our definitions underneath tobacco products. The jewels, I'm sure you've all heard of, they're like huge right now with our students, not just our school, but surrounding schools. The reason they're so popular is because they're very discreet. A lot of kids do them in class, and a teacher may not even know, because, you know, the smell is there for a second and then it's gone. A lot of kids are sticking their, you know, mouths down their shirt, and blowing the smoke down their shirt. I mean, they even make clothing now where you can put a string in your mouth from your hoodie sweatshirt and vape that way. So, there's a lot of different ways they're going to the bathrooms and doing it basically anywhere, again, because it's so discreet. So, because it's became such a problem, again, not just in our school, but the administrators and I have talked about really cracking down and what we can do to try to prevent these jewels. So, what we have, come, the decision we've came to is every jewel that they take off of a student, they're bringing to me. I'm testing that jewel for any traces of marijuana. That's the only thing, only drug I'm testing it for right now, because the hash oil is also popular to be put into the jewels. And you wouldn't be able to tell that this oil is tobacco or if it's marijuana. So, I'm testing those, but then, the problem that we have is that when you look in St. Jen's city ordinance, it doesn't, it defines tobacco products as any substance, do you guys need copies of? Because I'd manage copies.
Can I have one?
Sure. So this is St. Jen's city ordinance. Then I also have a city ordinance from, let's see, this one's St. Charles, no, City of St. Charles. And then, I also have some examples from Farmington, if you guys want to pass those around.
Yeah, Kristy, we have had reports of them using them on buses also.
Absolutely, yes. I'm glad you brought that up, because, yeah, it's, it's anywhere. I mean, we're getting reports of them jeweling anywhere. So, the City of St. Jen ordinance, right now, it defines tobacco products as any substance containing tobacco leaf, including but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, pipes, tobacco snuff, chewing tobacco, or dipping tobacco. So, that doesn't really describe what the jewel is. Whereas if you look, for instance, at the definition of the City of St. Charles, city ordinance, which is on page two, there at the top, it describes the vapor product, and it goes into defining it as having a heating element, power source, electronic circuit. I won't read that to, all to you, but that basically describes a jewel compared to what our city ordinance describes right now, because the jewels do have a heating element that's in them. Let's see. And then Farmington is, theirs is worded pretty much the same on the first page underneath vapor product. I mean, in our city ordinance right now, we don't have any definition that defines a vapor product. It's just defining tobacco products, and that's kind of where I'm stuck as far as. So what, what we're doing, looking at doing right now is, any, like, anyone who's under the age of 17, we take that jewel, again, I test it, and then, you know, depending on the outcome, if it's a tobacco, if it's not testing positive for marijuana, and we're assuming that it has the tobacco, the nicotine in it. The school will enforce discipline on their end, but what I would do is refer up to the juvenile office for the possession of tobacco by a minor. If they are 17, then a citation would be issued to them for possession of the jewel. We're not looking to hammer kids on these jewels, but I think we're trying to set an example that these jewels can't be tolerated in school. And so far, I have not had any tests positive for marijuana, but I know they're out there, and we just haven't gotten one yet, which of course is going to rise to a different level. But, you know, we've got to have something, I feel like, in place where it gives me the ability to make that referral and to write that citation and show these kids that we're not tolerating these jewels in our schools. I would say on average, I haven't got a lot from the high school recently, but I would say on average from, or from the middle school, but at the high school, I would say we're probably getting three, four, five jewels a week. And that's just increased, and that's just the ones that are getting caught, so.
So the, the use of that product in the school is a violation of the school's policy?
Correct.
Probably not.
But it's also part, there's state law in that as well, isn't there, Mark?
We can, you can easily adopt an ordinance that would prohibit minors possessing the vaping product.
But, I mean, the state law already addresses that, we just haven't updated our city code to reflect the state, right?
I'm not sure, to tell the truth, I'm not sure about state laws, minors and the vaping, I think that's true, but I can give you a.
Because your gas stations and stuff can't sell to minors because of their state tobacco license, or rules too.
Well, it's not tobacco, it's a nicotine product.
Well.
So, so that's why it would have to be updated. It's not, I've done in other cities, you just have to let me know if you want me to, or, you know, I think the Missouri Minister would highest draft ordinances if you want us to go in that direction. Give me some, some guidance, so what you want me to do.
Sounds like it's just a simple.
An amendment to.
A simple amendment to add that definition.
That's right.
To our, to our existing ordinance. To our, to our existing ordinance.
Yeah, and then just prohibit minors from possessing it. And then you can, then you have an enforcement mechanism.
Yeah, I think we should move forward on that.
I agree.
So, then 210.630 would have to also be, we'd update the amended definitions?
Yeah, I think that has to amend, I have to amend two ordinances to add the definition and then the other one to prohibit that.
The minors.
And that's exactly, you're looking for Officer Clark?
Yes.
Exactly, okay.
Yes, that definition added in there. And then, like she said, the 210.630 would need to be amended as well because right now it just basically falls back on our current definition of a tobacco product. So, we would need to add in there vapor products.
I think it's timely.
Yeah. Sound in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
So, nothing concerning the sale?
Should we do an exemption on that?
No, I mean, I'm going to have to draft an ordinance and then I'll sit here at the next meeting, just like in the normal procedure. It's an emergency, you have to do it twice and put one in. I'll put it next meeting, in advance of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Takes us to Martin, Martin?
So, as of today, Joker's has completed all the adjustments that needed to be made on our vaping project.
Was that the Pine, that Pine Street?
That's, that's taken care of.
Okay.
And the other was a riser on a manhole on Fourth Street and Steve and his crew coordinated with them today and got that done. Since we last met, we've had two meetings with the chamber and the IDC about their desire to promote residential development in the city. Mark attended the last meeting, Mark Bishop, to inform them that the city has a statutory obligation to get something close to market value if it disposes of a city asset. And we're going to continue to pursue that. I agreed to get them some additional information, which I've done partially today. And the other discussion we had was the economic development position. So, I, I agreed to get them a, a description of the scope of work the full-time economic development office would do, and then they can start considering how, how that could be funded. And rightfully, I mean, it's kind of a natural extension of the housing issue because what the things that an economic development professional does is works with the community to try and make sure they have present the elements that support economic growth. So, adequate housing is one of those things. So, it's not totally off, off base when we started that, that discussion. I met with CMO, nothing really came out of that. The FEMA representative came in and we will meet again next week to submit our, our claim for, for damages. The, we did talk a little bit about the possibility of mitigation, but I don't think, really think we have a mitigation project, but, you know, we have to, you know, reestablish the drainage system north of the, of the gate every time it floods because it fills up with, with mud. He thought there might be something, something there, so we're going to, we're going to look at that. The, won't steal Buck's thunder for Brian's, for the community television, they'll talk to you about that when it comes time to report. The, kind of in anticipation of this meeting and Sarah's recommendation, we had a special meeting of the tourism advisory council. Four or five people showed up to talk about the issues that we discussed tonight. So, that was actually a very good, 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 good meeting. Tended Mississippi Line Advisory Panel. I don't know if you count the stacks that are putting out smoke, but their business is down. They, they titled one of their kilns, they laid off some, some people, and they hope that it will pick up and get back to full force in, in, in the near future. The... What was the, oh, the Heritage Commission. Are you reporting tonight, Dave?
No.
No, Dave's not reporting tonight. At the Heritage Commission meeting, they considered the hardship language again and decided to put it, to, to, to ring it up again at their, at their next meeting, but eventually you'll be getting a recommendation from them on revising the hardship language in the, in, in the heritage, historic preservation ordinance. And while Gary's here tonight, he's not going to report either. We mentioned the donated playground equipment. We have received that and as soon as they can work it in their schedule, they will install it at Pinkley Park. Right now, it's sitting on the old tennis courts. The final thing is about this time each year for the last three or four years, you have authorized a small payment to our employees in recognition of Christmas time at thirty dollars, and the question is whether you wanted to do that again this year. It's thirty-six employees would be affected by that, so it's thirty times thirty-six. Okay. Any questions?
Thanks, Martin.
Steve?
Good evening, everyone.
Mr. Steve Wilson.
First thing here, the UP system is completely installed at the square treatment plant. We actually have a start date of December sixteenth at eight AM. That's when we will actually power the unit up for the first time and water through it and treating water, treating the effluent. Something we haven't, haven't had the ability to do in some time now. So, that's kind of big in the wastewater business. On the, on the water, water side, we had a continuous chlorine monitor fail the other day, or last month. That unit, we are required to operate twenty-four hours a day for our permit, monitoring the chlorine levels in the water. The unit failed, we immediately ordered another one. It was there the next morning. Contacted DNR, notified them about it. They were fine with it. Said they were impressed with our measures as far as getting it replaced as quick as we did. So, let's see, earlier today, like Martin had said, we replaced the manhole on Fourth Street at Seraphin. It was previously covered. It's now been raised up to street grade. Everybody worked real well together. I want to thank Gary and his crew for flagging and keeping traffic under control. It was, it was real nice. The last thing I got is every year at this time, I report the, or I return back what was not spent out of our repair camp, our, our repair account as part of our budget. This year, I'm returning to the city five thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. So...
Yeah, I'll just take that.
Everybody gets to touch it.
Steve and Lonnie want to come in on this question.
But, so, other than land application, what options are available for disposal of sludge?
The class of sludge that we have, very little, but the process that we use, there are other processes that you can use. You can, you can de-water it, you can dry it out. One of the problems that we would have with doing anything else with our bio-salads would be the amount of inorganic material as far as like plastics and stuff that are, that are in our bio-salads. You can't get a Class A.
Those things are going in the fields now?
To some extent, yes. That's one of the capital improvement projects I've been looking at is a new screen for the headworks of wastewater treatment plant to remove that so we can maybe class, maybe make ours a Class A bio-solids.
That was, yeah, only me was reading about some progress in wastewater treatment and there are some bio... I'm turning this, biomes, I guess is the word before, that they now spread in the field for corn and soybean, anything that's shaded, and, and they kind of generate their own nitrogen. So, there's no need for additional nitrogen fertilizing, and nitrogen is what they want from the sludge. So...
Correct.
My thought was, oh goodness, if they start doing that, you know, in St. Genevieve, we're not going to have a place to take our sludge.
Yeah, if we have the ability to make ours into a Class A bio-salads where it could be land applied in a dry form, I mean, there are locations, larger, larger facilities that they have the ability to, I mean, they actually sell it to the farmers instead of paying the farmers.
Yeah, but this would, this would kill the market for, for that.
Yeah.
Because there's a natural process that creates the nitrogen rather than, than application. Although, there's nothing much more natural than sludge.
Steve, did you say you were looking into researching the opportunity to try and get this screen to upgrade us? Where, where are you on that? Are you going to present something to the board eventually?
Well, at this, at this point, our wastewater, at the intake of the wastewater plant, there's a bar screen. That bar screen has gaps in it. Some of, some of you have come down, I've showed it to you. The gaps are nearly an inch to an inch and a quarter wide. If it's a Jolly Rancher wrapper, if it's a ramen noodle packet, if it's, lots of stuff gets flushed down the pipes, but if it's small or flexible, it can get through that. And we have other, other measures in place throughout the treatment process to catch as much as we can or see, but the stuff that's under the water, we don't, we don't get to see that. So, a mechanical bar screen of some kind at the headworks removes everything down to, you know, an eighth or a quarter inch.
Have they, I mean, have you researched the cost? I'm just curious. I'm just, I know I blabber this, but are you looking to...
Cost you're looking at, to do the grade work and site work and install, probably a quarter million.
Hmm.
Okay. So, it's going to take some planning.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Think about that, will you put that gum wrapper in the street next time?
Now, you know I wouldn't do that.
That's not getting to the...
I'm a very calm...
It's the one you flush down the road.
Sir, my mother's eyes.
Thanks, Steve. Chief Bennett?
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
Haven't seen you guys in a while.
Been a while.
Yeah, well, we missed the second meeting in November, so that's when I hit the later reports, so...
Right. Oh, I see.
Yeah. I've instructed my guys to stop flushing the ramen noodle packet down the toilet, so I think that'll help with some of Steve's nitrates, so. I really don't have too much to report. We're still full staff. All the equipment seems to be doing well. Just finished up with the, the Christmas walk. It seemed successful. It's kind of a busy day for us, both with, with things in town and, and some mutual aid stuff out of town, but worked, worked well with the sheriff's department again and, and everything's going well. I do have a, the intention in putting in a grant for the Community Development Foundation to upgrade, I say upgrade, really replace the optics on our patrol rifles. We went with lesser grade optic a couple of years ago and they're, they're failing on us. We've had some, some issues with that. So, with your, with your consent, and that's later on in the agenda, we'll prepare that grant application and, and submit that. On a, on a side note, I know we've talked about kind of the opiate epidemic lately and realizing that everybody is guilty or innocent until proven guilty. We, we've made some, some significant progress in that. We've, we're able to conduct an investigation and get some people in custody about a month ago, and I don't know that we've had an overdose since then. So, we're pretty pleased with that. I mean, obviously, it's something that we're going to stay on top of and try to, try to keep a hold of, but, but I think we definitely made some headway in, in some of our, our issues that we were having there. So, the guys are doing well. We just appreciate you guys' support. Yes, sir?
So, it seems to be a small rash of vehicle?
Yes.
And in conversations with your staff, it, it also seems that those are kind of happening because people aren't taking the precautions they should when they leave their vehicles?
Yes. I, I don't know that I've ever worked a theft case in this town where somebody has forcefully entered a vehicle and stolen it. Every vehicle we've ever had stolen, the keys were left in it, or the newer vehicles have the, the remote keyless entry and, and remote start, that they leave the key fob, the extra key fob in the vehicle. So, it certainly makes it easy. Again, we've had a lot of cars that have gone, been dawned through lately, especially this time of year, all, all, all times of the year. Just, it's not Mayberry. You know, we, we need to lock our cars, we need to lock our houses, and, you know, we certainly try to stay on top of things and, and keep people as they're moving around and keep people from doing this, but if people see an easy, easy target, they're going to take it. So, we do, we do encourage everybody to, to lock their, their vehicles, lock their houses and, and help us stay on top of that. We've also had issues where, where, and I probably commented on this in the past, but we'll get a call at five o'clock in the evening and somebody's coming back from work saying, "Yeah, I caught somebody in my vehicle at four o'clock this morning when I was leaving for work, but I had to go, so I was in a hurry. I couldn't," you know, but you guys need to watch out for that. So, if you see something at the time, give us a shout at the time. It's going to be a lot easier for, for us to, to run across somebody at four o'clock in the morning than, than twelve hours later. So, please don't hesitate to call us. Why we're there and, and we're certainly happy to help. We had an issue since, since the personnel change with, with Lisa going up front, which I think is going well from, from everything.
It is.
But some of the issues that we had is we're not manning the office necessarily twenty-four hours a day or, or during business hours. Our officers are out on the street, you know, Jason or I might, might be here, or an officer might be here doing the report, but they were getting a lot of people up to City Hall looking for an officer back there. We have installed a Ring Door Camera, our doorbell, and, and integrated that with all of our officers' data terminals in their cars so they can see when somebody's here at the office. For anybody who's watching, you know, we still do encourage you to contact dispatch, but if, if they ring the doorbell, we do at least have access, you know, the officers that are out to, to come here and, and contact them, but...
Do you have a, you have a Ring Door Camera so you can see? Can you communicate with that person?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, you can ask them to stand by?
Yeah, we have somebody on the way or, you know, if they're, if they're not available. But hopefully, that'll reduce some of your foot traffic up front, and it seems to be working pretty well so far, so.
Let me get this right. The recent car theft, they were, none of them were broken into?
We've, I've never had a car broken into and hotwired and stolen or anything like that. I mean, it's always...
I'm always curious.
An open, open door and keys left in the vehicle.
That's what got me to go back there is I was reading the reports and I went, well, you know, when you got keyless submissions now, how do people do that? And they said, well, that's not who's getting stolen.
Yeah. Yeah, people lock their vehicles and take their keys with them or not get stolen, so.
Yeah.
Did you go to a, yesterday, did you go to a, I had a citizen call me, did you go to a meeting with the domestic, about domestic violence?
Yeah, they had a luncheon yesterday, domestic violence, kind of a, kind of an awareness program, you know, spelling out some of the resources that, that they provide and...
Who's that?
The CMO Family Violence Council.
Anyway, they, they called me and commented on your professionalism and the great questions and your, you and your officers' enthusiasm, so...
Well, good.
That's always nice to hear.
Yeah.
Keep up the good work.
And they did a good job. It was, it was a good program, so we're always certainly happy to help, help with that.
Great.
And I got my poor bed running today, just for anybody that doesn't know this, so...
Keep Mayberry safe.
Yeah.
Chief Snyder, you here?
Yeah, he's here.
I don't really have a lot because I wasn't really going to be on the agenda. I am proud to announce, as I forwarded all the, all the matter earlier, that we did have our audit results come back and we are proud to say that we did get back to our Class Four ISO rating. I'm in the process, they evaluate and how we did and where we can make improvements. Up three is a long way away for us, but there's a chance that we could get it someday, so I'm looking at what we can do to, to make the improvements, but we are very happy that we went from five back to the four that we had before. So, that should say homeowners, that'll take effect March of two thousand twenty. So, at that point, homeowners should contact your insurance companies and let them know and check on their prices. I also do have a couple of grant requests for you guys for approval. And November, luckily for us, is a little slower. October is a very busy month with PRs and everything else, but everything seems to be going smooth out there.
So, I mentioned that I was at the Citizens Advisory Panel for Mississippi Line and two things. One is I announced to that group that we had to change in the local... One is I announced to that group that we had to change in the local insurance agent. He was like, very enthusiastic, thought that that would make a difference. For his clients, he said, "It made a difference in their rate." But then they had their rescue team report on, they won an award for mine rescue, and one of the things that they were, they talked about was the level of cooperation they get from the ambulance and the fire department, and that the, kind of the synergy of agencies working to, in case there's a mine incident. Could you address that?
Yeah. They have their own specialty mine rescue team that's designed to go underground and do whatever kind of rescues they have, but it's made up of a member of employees, and they can come from as far away as an hour away. So we are more or less the initial rescue team for them. We recently had a sit-down, for lack of a better term, table-type exercise, and right now, they're going for March, April-ish, of having a simulation underground rescue situation. So we talked about how we could interact with them, and what we can supply and what they can supply, and how our responses would be with the ambulance service and requirements to go underground and everything. So we had about a two-hour session with that, got it all planned out. As a matter of fact, yesterday, we were out there to take one of our trucks underground, make sure we could access them, and while we were out there, caught a dumpster fire and a couple of other things happened at the same time. But we actually took one of our trucks, the rescue truck, underground and made sure it would clear and get in where we needed to be. And we also checked some of their equipment compatibility with what we carry on our truck. And some of the equipment they have below ground will interact with ours, too. So we're going to use our equipment first, because we know the history of it, then in a real bind, we could add some of their equipment to supplement what we have. So we've been working on that, and like I said, we have an underground operation coming up. We're going to be typical as volunteer, if it happens during the day, it's going to be harder for us to get a lot of people there, but we're going to take part in it as much as we can.
Which truck you take down?
The 61, our rescue truck. During the simulation, we'll probably be taking 61, our rescue truck, the pickup truck for manpower, and then we'll take our turnout gear, we'll probably be put in the back of the pickup truck. So we should only have two trucks underground at that time.
I got, not necessarily for Kenny, but why do, like, both chiefs and whoever have to come to us to get permission for a grant for free money? I understand if it's a matching grant, but if it's not a matching grant, why do they have to have our approval for that?
Because the grant's a contract, and when we get the grant, you have to eventually approve it. So if we don't get your permission ahead of time, we run the risk, albeit a small one, that when we come to-
So it just helps-
For the final action, you, you know, they say, "I don't want that grant." So just given the authority to apply, so when it comes in, we sign off on it.
Have we ever turned away from money?
Not in my tenure.
I just thought it was strange that it has to go through that step.
One thing I would say, that one of the grants that I have before you, and requesting permission to proceed with, is the AFG Grant, the Federal Assistance to Firefighter Grant, and that is an online application, so I really don't have that available to give you for approval. It's basically the same thing we did last year, but what I'm wanting to do is join a group from the St. Francis County and St. Genevieve County that's kind of a co-op, and they'll have one host department that'll actually do the application, and we'll do part of it, we'll submit information to be entered into that grant program. So even though they haven't opened it up yet, it's anticipated in January, and because there's going to be a group of fire departments involved in it, it may be some time-sensitive stuff that may be hard to get in here and get approval in time. So I'm just asking for your approval to proceed as I deem necessary. The funding, because it is a match, would be available in rural fire fund to cover expenses, and it shouldn't exceed the amount that I was asking for last year for the prior grant request.
Good. So Joe, I mean, if you'd like to adopt the policy that if there's no financial commitment on the part of the city, that we don't need to bring it to your attention, I'm like you, I don't see why you'd ever turn down the grant.
Yeah, I mean, and, well, I mean, if it had a matching, well, Kenny usually has his matching grants covered, like you just said, but I mean-
No, if there's a match, I think you would definitely need to come through. Okay.
But I think it's understood that-
A no-match.
Yeah, I mean, why not try? It's not a guarantee you're going to get it, but if it speeds up the process for them.
There have been a number of occasions when we found out about a grant, the deadline was coming before, we had a board meeting, and we went ahead and asked for your forgiveness later, but if we don't need to do that, that's all.
Does it actually even-
No, I just wanted to make sure that-
Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Not for a no-match.
Not for no-matches.
All right, great. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Call area committee reports.
What we got for our-
No wonder we're going to have a planning and zoning meeting.
PT first. Well, the next planning and zoning meeting should be about a zone change for the Villas, I'll call them. Our contract with him called for us to process the zone change, for him to initiate it, but he had to get the survey done to define the property that we will be amending. And the surveyor called me a week before last, said, "I'm putting the final touches on this, I need to know if there's setbacks." I said, "Well, okay, when you give it to Mark, tell him he's got to give it to me in order to get that going." And I haven't heard anything from him, but I'll send an email tomorrow and see what's going on.
Okay. Somebody else?
I guess in regard, I mean, we'll probably touch base on the, basically, all we have to say just after-
Yeah.
During the discussion.
We got Gary Whitner and Phil Tucker from the TV board.
They're going to be afterwards in discussion.
After the meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. Any public comments? Okay, that takes us to the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Turn on that in. Takes us to old business. Second reading of Bill Number 4330, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 715, User Charge System, Section 715.040, user rates of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code, reading water use charges.
No approval.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
No.
Thank you very much. Takes us to-
Seven, yes.
I'm sorry.
One, no. Bill Number 4330 now becomes ordinance 4259.
Thank you. Takes the Bill Number 4331, Ordinance Amending Chapter 715, User Charge Systems, Section 715.140, Sewer Charges and Billings, Subsection D of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code Regarding Sewer Use Charges.
Paul, can we have a little discussion on this first?
Yes, sir.
You know, we've already approved those changes in the budget. It seems a little redundant, having to go back through and approve an ordinance after the fact. Why does that have to be in that, why does that have to be in that sequence?
Well, it didn't have to be in that sequence. We could have done this first, I guess, and then put it in the budget, but until you said this is the level of approval, it can't be effectuated without adopting an ordinance. So we had the public hearing, made a decision, it requires amendment to our ordinance before we can start charging.
Can I ask you a question?
I guess.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second. Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Wolfen.
No.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Seven, yes, one, no. Bill Number 4331 now becomes ordinance 4260.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4333, An Ordinance Amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 215, Nuances, Article 5, Dangerous Buildings, By Adding Section 154263, Pre-HUD Mobile Homes. Motion to approve.
I second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Seven, yes, one, no. Bill Number 4331 now becomes ordinance 4260.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4333, An Ordinance Amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 215, Nuances, Article 5, Dangerous Buildings, Section 215.210, Definitions.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
No.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Seven, yes, one, no. Bill Number 4333 now becomes ordinance 4261.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4334, An Ordinance Amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 215, Nuances, Article 5, Dangerous Buildings, Section 215.210, Definitions.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Eight, yes, zero, no's. Bill Number 4334 now becomes ordinance 4262.
Thank you. Bill Number 4335, An Ordinance Amending the City of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 500, Buildings and Buildings Regulations, Article 2, Building Code, Section 500.110, Code Subsection B, International Residential Building Code, Adopted, Set For Below.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
No.
Seven, yes, one, no. Bill Number 4335 now becomes ordinance 4263.
Thank you. Takes us to new business. Bill Number 4336, An Ordinance Approving the Purchase of a 2019 John Deere 350G Compact Excavator from Herb Equipment, Penn, Missouri, in the amount not to exceed $22,500.
I make a motion-
Yes?
Need to have, make sure I've got these numbers clear and stuff. This is basically a trade-in difference.
Steve?
The numbers you see will be $20,000 trade-in for the currently city-owned, current city-owned Kubota excavator.
Okay, we don't see that.
Twenty-two-five difference.
It's on the paperwork.
It's the second page right here.
It's on the second page, Bob.
Oh, okay. I didn't-
So what's the purpose of the purchase?
The existing excavator that we have is a smaller, lighter-duty machine. It was originally purchased when we did a meter changeout program, and we were changing out meter pits in people's yards, moving them from basements to the yards. Since that's been completed, our scope of work has changed. We moved on to a little bit bigger programs, and basically, we made a bigger machine. The other one's not productive. Also reached the five-year mark on that. Warranty ran out, and becoming a maintenance issue.
And this is equipment you would share?
Absolutely.
Our bag though's too big for-
Right.
Utility, or not all of it, but just-
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second reading on Bill Number 4336, An Ordinance Approving the Purchase of a 2019 John Deere 350G Compact Excavator from Herb Equipment, Penn, Missouri, in the amount not to exceed $22,500.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Johnson.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Wolfen.
Yes.
Eight, yes, zero, no's. Bill Number 4336 now becomes 4264.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other business?
No.
If there's no other business, I'll call this meeting adjourned, and we will just start right back. You want to take a few minutes break before we do the-
Make them say, "Close your mouth."
Yeah?
Close my mouth.
Joe, you got two minutes. We'll reconvene at 6:46.
I'm not used to them. Come on, getting used to them.
But they're there, are they on?
You want to take some of the money that is available to us for capital improvements and spend it and where you might want to spend it. Attached to your packet was this, kind of, what the funds are that are available. The, uh,
Pretty much.
How long?
There's too much noise on the lower end down there. Here is here.
So, the general fund has a certificate of deposit of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven, five, six fifty-six. We expect if we follow our budget, we expect to do, or do better than our budget, we would have at least four-hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-sixty-five of surplus capital in the general fund at the end of the budget. The debt service fund is actually a capital improvement fund, but it dates back to the levy. The tax that was implemented when the levy was first constructed to raise the funds for the levy. It was then converted to capital improvement funds. And we refinanced our certificates of appreciation back in, when I first got here in two thousand and twelve, I guess, two thousand and two. How long I been here? Not that long. Two thousand and twelve. And while it cost us more, kind of, upfront, the savings, long-term, are real. And so, we expect to, that fund will generate ninety-five thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars more in revenue than we need to cover the refinanced debt service this year. So, that money is available to use for capital improvements. According to the vote that was done by the citizens of St. Genevieve when you converted the levy tax to a capital improvement tax, it's still called the debt service fund, but it isn't all needed for debt service. And when the debt is paid off, it will be available, all of it will be available for capital improvements going forward.
That's not true. I thought, once it's, the debt service is paid off. Well, I know, but once the debt service is paid off, I thought that's when our water tower payments start.
Oh, sorry. It's correct.
Yes.
So, you'll still have ninety-five thousand of any, good point. The capital improvements fund is that capital that was set aside for levy projects that we've decided not to pursue. So, the question, at the end, at the end of two-twenty, we'll have a million three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. And the question that we've addressed here is how much is enough? We, we discussed, you know, funding of full years of operating, which is covering fifty percent, doing twenty-five percent. That, that million three-thirty-three four oh eight is fifty percent of the general fund annual expenditure. So, it's about two million dollars.
It's got what?
The general fund expenditure for the current budget here is about two million dollars.
Okay.
This amount, the surplus at the end of September is, is about half, a little more than half of our annual expenditure in the, in the general fund. Not everything else, not water and sewer, not roads, just the general fund expenditures.
Well, we've, I don't think, this is one issue that I, I kind of had, I don't recall us, I know we had those discussions, but there was never really a, a decision determined on, on what we thought was sufficient for the
I agree.
So, I, I've discussed with a couple others here, the possibility of bringing forth some sort of, like, resolution stating, like, what, what we think is sufficient. It kind of makes it hard to make decisions on the budget if you don't know what's a sufficient emergency fund, you know, because if you have a surplus, or if you're taking away, obviously if you're taking away from that emergency fund, you're like, well, darn, we, we don't need to because we think this much is what we need, or vice versa. If we have a surplus coming forward, well, we need to, rather than put it into that fund, we need to spend it. So, I don't know if that's something that can be done, or, or if we could just come
If you decide at what level you want to fund surplus, general fund surplus, you know, we can, we can adopt a resolution establishing that policy. And it will be held at, at that level until somebody changes it.
Right.
So, what you're asking about tonight, though, is what we are projected to have over this year on our budget, what to do with it. Is that correct?
Yes. And that million three, how much of it do you want to spend? What do you want?
No, the surplus from this year's budget versus what we spent is what you're asking about, isn't it?
If you decide you want to do a walking trail in Pear Marquette Park at eighty thousand dollars, we will spend down that balance that we projected the end of the year.
Okay.
To, and, 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 and and we could spend it all, you know, but, but we don't want to spend it all. But how much of it do you want to spend? And where do you want to spend it? And Gary's come up with some
But what we projected to have a shortfall next year, budget-wise?
Well, that, that was going to be another question, is, is where's the, the four-hundred-and-ten-thousand surplus that we're talking here? Is that from sale of assets?
That was my question. Where is the proceeds from our sale of assets, just in general?
In the general fund.
So, so was that four-hundred-and-ten surplus because of that sale of assets?
Yes, it would be counted in.
Should go back to capital fund. I mean, we took six-hundred thousand out of the capital fund to make that project happen. Anything we got out of it should go back to replace that, is my personal opinion.
Okay. I agree.
And we still have a number sitting out there on what we're going to do at this place.
Are you talking about in this capital improvements fund? Or, or what capital?
The debt service.
Sue counted the revenue, posted the revenue when it came in. So, it's in that, it's in the revenue figure.
So, the sale of the real estate should go back to the capital fund to recover what we've already spent out of the capital fund to make that happen, plus the light bill.
Well, then the question would be, how much do we need in the capital fund?
Right.
Before we need to spend it?
Well, I don't think we should spend anything until we find out what we're going to be wanting to do here at City Hall and see what that number's going to come in at.
That's just
Before we do any, I know, but before we do any of the other main, you know, projects here, we got to look at what we already have, the ball rolling on something, and we don't have a number on.
And this eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollar number, what have we paid for out of that? Have we paid for Chadwell Lane? Have we paid for our recent?
That's all been, Chadwell Lane's paid and the, and, and, and the
Payment.
overlay said.
All basically out of this capital improvement.
Before that, before you saw that eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, no, it came out of this, it didn't come out of that fund.
Right.
It came out of the road bridge fund, this three-quarter fund. The only thing that, that we had, that seventy-five thousand dollars that we've been holding on to from the special road gathering, that was used up Chadwell.
I think I agree with Joe. I mean, I know you gentlemen are going to talk about this proposal, but it's all for this room and we don't know what's happening with this room. I don't think we can really move forward.
I'm, I'm next, fine.
And for the record, I agree as well.
And then we're having a short meeting. Listen, listen, I want to hear
I'd like to hear more about the resolution as well, being of good information.
Can I get one more answer real quick, sorry, Phil, before, Martin, this one-point-three millionaire, is, is this, I, I understand this is the, that's just the, the collection of all of these funds that you have here, right? So, basically, we have one-point-three million.
You have two million three-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars.
That is not the emergency fund. That is not our emergency fund, right? Talking about on our budget, our line out of emergency fund?
No.
Okay. I just wanted clarification, just making sure. I didn't have a budget in front of me to
But I didn't assume you wanted cash NCDs.
Right.
But out of this four-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollar fund as of September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, that's where we would pay for our paving projects.
They've been paid, oh, you mean?
No, that's, that's, that's above and beyond. The paving projects are in the budget.
And this is, this is a general fund and those come out of the, the, the interest, transportation.
Just want to make sure what's in, what's on.
And you don't spend money
Before we spend it. Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll stop this discussion on hold.
Let's start listening. Okay.
Okay.
About what? Which question?
How many bridges does the city own or have maintenance?
Responsibility.
Responsibility for? Is it just the two on Fourth Street?
The third street.
Third street.
Third street.
Bridge on Chadwell, too, that little bridge there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bridge on Chadwell.
Chadwell, yeah.
Did I answer your question? Since you didn't speak up.
All of our brick, well, I say all of them.
Yeah, so, so
The state rates our bridges, they're only the two of, two of the four.
Right.
Kind of want to, yeah, come, come off of that a little bit in, in regards to, you, you bring that up and it, and it brings up, when we were discussing the water department and what, the same emergency funding discussion came up of what, what we thought was sufficient for the water department. And it was, it was kind of stated that a sufficient amount would be to cover our most expensive expense if something, our liability or whatever, that, that would come up if, if there was an issue, would could that same situation apply to, like, the general budget as well? Is that another, when, when discussion, like, a resolution or some, some sort? Is, is that some, like, what, what would our most expensive liability be if something were to happen? Or is, is it a general practice to, to, you know, well, the water department's a completely different entity, so, you know, it probably makes sense to operate its
No, we can't use water and sewer funds for anything but water and sewer.
Well, no, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying, I'm strictly talking about consistency of, of the, the principle on, on how we want to operate emergency funds in general.
Yeah, you could consider the same thing, although I think utility is a little different from, from general operations. I mean, if the, only for the, for the actual utility structures, if, if they lost, if the tornado took out the building across from the Welcome Center, that would not be a critical loss. If the water hit the
It'd be, it would be the first across the street from the Welcome Center.
If it hit the treatment, if it hit the water treatment plant, we'd be, you know, citizens wouldn't have drinking water. So, there is a difference.
Right. Well, that's what, that's, I'm just, not, not too sure, I don't know, I guess that's just a discussion I'd like to have of what's
Are you driving to get real numbers? Is that where your mind's going?
Well, it's, it's
Fifty percent might be enough in one case, but not in the other.
It's hard to do budget without, without real numbers. Is that what you're saying?
Do what?
It's hard to figure out budget without real numbers?
Essentially. And so, you know, without, you know, same with the water department, and, and I know we're kind of getting offhand here, but just talking, circles around in general, it's, it's just hard to determine what to do if you don't know how much money you want.
And that drives to your resolution.
I wish I could give you, like, a standard, like, the industry standard cities is this. It didn't, it's out there all over the place.
My God, I'm in agreement with you, too.
I know.
But don't we have separate reserve funds for the water and sewer department?
He's saying, if we're going to adopt a policy of having a percentage of reserves, should it apply to all funds, just the general?
So, are we mandated under those reserves either? Or it's just whatever we think?
Whatever you think. Now, we, we had a goal of getting to a million dollars in each water, each fund, water and sewer, that was adopted. That was, first got here and met with Terry Merritt, because we weren't, we weren't close. And there was, and, and, and since, since then, we've been able to get the fund up to a level that I think we're, we're comfortable. So, now Steve can start scheduling capital improvement projects that we weren't doing before.
And it also goes along with our bond rating and
Yes. Standard and Poor's is the rating agency. They're, they're more looking at our general fund balance, but, but that, yes, they
But that is something major we have to keep in mind as well if we ever have to
But if we, if we, if we had a policy, as you suggested, that you consider adequate, they'll consider adequate, and what they'll be determining is, are you meeting your, are you meeting your goal?
Gotcha.
Yeah, we were going the wrong way when I got here.
Right.
Our, our reserves were diminishing here.
Yeah.
So, we have a million dollars in reserve of those two funds?
We have one million sixty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars in CDs. You will have a million three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand four-hundred-and-eight additional dollars if the budget plays out. But it does count with the revenue she's already posted from the sale of property. So, if you want to take that out of that, you know, you're going to have less than that. At the, at the end of the year, you want to discount that revenue. But, but, but but we're talking about using it, using it for capital projects, and I kind of thought that was what started this whole discussion. We've got this money, now what are we going to do with it?
I think, like I said, we need to put it back where it came from and then sit on it until we find out what these other things
Okay, then we should not consider new capital projects. It is, I mean, right now, it, it, it didn't come from, it's just an accounting function. It's not going to be spent unless you approve capital projects.
I, I mean, we have, we have, I don't understand what's the reasoning that, that you're getting at there, Joe. Like, why, why put it back and sit on it if, if we feel, if we feel like we have
Where the money came from.
I understand, but what's, what's the, what's the goal of, of that money in general?
I'm not saying I'm not spending it.
It's, yeah, I mean, it's to put back in there so that we can make
Capital improvements.
Not just put it, keep it in general revenue where we don't know where it's going to go necessarily.
That's what I was understanding.
So, what, it, what, what, what can be funded out of capital improvement?
Improvements on City Hall.
Capital improvements, anything that's considered a capital improvement.
That has an economic life, technically.
So, roads cannot, roads could not be funded out of that?
Road is a capital improvement.
It could be.
A copying machine will build.
But just because that money is in the general fund right now, it doesn't mean it's getting spent. We still have to approve the expense. So, it's just sitting
All we can spend is what you budget. And there's no there's only one place to put revenue.
I didn't make sure, should I understood your comment. So, out of this million three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, that includes the sale of the Piva building?
And the progress parking lot.
I believe so.
So, that number would reduce several hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
So, that doesn't look like a four-hundred-thousand-dollar
What, what number would reduce?
This million three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand would reduce
I'm going to check this to make sure I'm speaking correctly.
Would reduce by all of the assets. We sold the Piva building, the
Right. So, I think we're all in agreement that we would like to use those funds for some
Right.
capital improvement.
Just where it goes.
Should be a requirement, yeah.
So, I, I would suggest that we hold off until we know what the building committee's going to recommend, but since these gentlemen are here today, that they at least get to fill us in on their proposal and we can consider help, you know, not maybe this proposal, depending on the building, but, but at least hear them out and see what they'd like to do.
And your resolution.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, that's before we spend, you know, two, three-hundred thousand. This is, I mean, I don't have a problem with small projects, which I consider this a small project.
Right. But we can't really say, yes, do this when we don't know what's happening with this building.
Well, we know we have enough money to cover, well, I guess not, because we don't technically have a, a decision made.
The money in the building comes out of the capital improvement fund, eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand.
Yes, sir.
So, so we have, we have the six-hundred-and-fifty thou, or six-hundred thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty, whatever it is from the Piva, and then we got the, the, the progress, or the, the land sales. So, it should total it over, you know, six-fifty to seven-hundred thousand. Why is it only four-hundred-and-ten thousand coming into the general fund? Why? Is it because we're covering other expen, other expen, okay, that's right. The, all right, never mind. Answer, answer my own question. Covering the negative.
Should we have a gentleman?
Yes, let's hear, let's hear what
Sorry about that, sir.
It's okay. As long as you get answers, you, you need to ask the questions. I was going to present a proposal for cable TV, starting off with that this particular camera is a questionable camera. Don't know if it's going to cover this meeting or not. Well, it solved the problem at five forty. It died. It's showing blue screen. It's dead. Was going to give you a proposal. If you look at the back, it's got the date. That is basically the fourth proposal. I've met with consultants, giving you your best shot for fixing the solution up here. We're taking into consideration, you don't know what this room's going to look like a year from now. We've got that covered. So, everything is flexible. If you move this way So, everything is flexible, if you move this way or whatever way, you're covered for what we're proposing. We're proposing to upgrade the cameras because we can't get anymore like that. They're obsolete, you can't find any, so we're trying to move the system up.
Or lack of. Well, the good news is, the ones he's proposing is really gonna be able to zoom in on those bald heads we have here, so, just so you know.
All right, youngster.
Sorry.
Question, sir, um...
Okay, boomer.
Boomer, there you go. This is all well and good, if and when we make capital improvements to the building, will we be able to still use the cameras?
Yes, yes. What, what I have envisioned is, you see where the cameras are now?
Yes, sir.
The proposal is to switch to IP addressing system, a network system, and with the cameras that would come, we have fifteen feet of cable to move the camera wherever. So, I mean, we can go whatever way you want to.
So, on the city, on your proposal, we're on the back page here?
The one that has got today's date.
So, you're asking us for seventy three hundred and eighty dollars?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking for, for the cameras?
Because, because we have a contract with the city, the contract says that the city owns the cameras that are in the ceiling. That would be your share of it and that is a reduced price because I went back to the bidder this, this morning early.
Yeah.
I sent him an email last night at eleven fifty seven, that type of thing, I said, the decision makers want a cheaper camera. And he comes back, well, if you purchase before the end of March, you get four hundred dollars off each camera. So, that's eight hundred dollars down, and I said, can we have a proposal for a cheaper camera? Well, two hundred dollars. And I am sending out dealers, is it worth two hundred dollars to go from a thirty par zoom to a twenty par zoom, a three-year contract service-wise to a one-year contract? One that is quiet or one that makes noise when it moves?
So, have you ever heard of the cameras?
No.
The, one that is the cheaper is a noisy one and it is belt driven and I, I don't recommend going with that, but I, I want some other people's input that we're making the right decision.
First of all, I, I for one wanna thank you for your due diligence and for working with the board and, and going back and trying to find discounts and helping us out, and as long as we can use those cameras that you're talking about when we upgrade this building, I recommend moving forward on this.
I mean, the, the adventure is...
He's here because it was, 'cause we have to budget it that item.
Right here, right?
Yeah, we don't budget, it's not in our budget.
So, where do we get this out?
I told him we were gonna be discussing capital improvements.
Okay.
And that this would constitute a capital improvement that could be incorporated in the building renovation. So, it's part of that capital improvement decision that you now...
But whether we do the renovation or not, they still need this.
Right.
And we can take it out of capital.
This, this one is dead.
And then you gotta think, there's more, there's, uh, there's several meetings in this room that...
I'm not arguing that.
So, you wanna go...
I wanna move forward with it.
Okay. I do, I wanna move forward, 'cause a lot of people watch online and...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they'll, uh, come back with a budget.
Are these some, oh, sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, I, uh, sort of unrelated, but closely related, back page, item B dot four, setup and training, is that installation cost bundled in there?
That's, yes, but we're going to work on that because...
That's same.
Some of the installation, it's not gonna charge you anything, 'cause I'm gonna do it.
So, so let me ask this, the reason for the question is, what would happen in a scenario where these cameras or this chamber was not in this building anymore? We would then have to fund that, or would we be capable of doing it in-house, or how would we...
We just lose the cameras.
We could do it ourselves, is the question, I think?
Yeah. Thank you.
You, you need to be connected to the stuff downstairs.
Okay.
So, if, if we moved buildings, it would need to, basically, in order for this whole system to work, Don would essentially need to move with it, or whatever. Everything downstairs.
That's my question.
And, and we've, we've discussed that, you know, trying to get, you know, remote and, and even live feed from remote, and it's with the systems that we're working with that just seem, you know, you're gonna need a hardwired, uh, whatever.
We have addressed the issue. I have posed the question to Bryant and Buck. Sometimes you have a meeting nights at Columbus. Is it worth, how many meetings will you have like that a year? One, maybe two? Is it worth ten thousand dollars? And they're saying, no.
Well, perhaps I'm, I'm being a little cryptic here, I don't need to be, this information feeds the building committee's recommendation, like, it's an expense that's unknown to us, so I just wanna add that into the whole expense if we were no longer in this building.
Is there any obligation to televise these meetings?
Not, no, I, I mean, I think it's good service.
We have approximately five to six thousand people that subscribe and pay for it, like seven dollars and eighty cents a month, and we've got the hospital, we've got the emergency homes, they're all subscribed to it, yes.
I mean, whether or not they would be shown live or, I mean, they're still gonna be shown no matter what.
Analysis.
The meetings are still gonna be televised, it's just whether or not they're live or not. They're still gonna record the meetings no matter what.
Yeah, but always be live, people, yeah.
There's only every forms of communication, you and me, the newspaper, and we report interprets what you're saying, or the actual TV itself saying, here, that's what so-and-so said. They've got it firsthand, and people do that.
Yeah, there's a good record of it.
I will, I will say, and, 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 Mike, what you're getting at is the, uh, the only thing that, like the setup and training, uh, is, is not coming out of the city's pocket. The, the only thing that's coming out of the city's pocket is camera cost, uh, the rest of it is coming out of cable channel.
Right.
So, that's, yeah, we, certainly I was like, whoa, 'cause I said the same question to everybody, I'm like, three grand to set up?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not so much making a judgment against the three grand, I'm just trying to dig to what's a hard cost we can put, you, Jimmy and I can put into a recommendation, because it's possible the board might vote to, to vacate this building and go somewhere else.
Yeah.
Just so we could get a number. If we can't get that, it's no big deal.
Yeah, that, that would be the...
So, you gotta move the whole downstairs, it's way more than three thousand dollars.
Well, the, at that point...
Across that bridge, we'd get there, I guess.
At, at that point, it would be, I hope the new building we choose might have an extra room for Don to, to, to studio out.
Maybe so.
The, the three thousand dollars in this proposal is for setup and training. I'm hoping to cut down on the cost for setup by doing it myself, so that we can transfer more time in training.
And then there, there is a maintenance contract for, uh, cable breaks or...
We have an amount in our budget for maintenance type issues and...
Any questions?
The equipment that we're purchasing and updating has maintenance contracts with it, like the new cameras that I'm proposing is a three-year maintenance. I mean, as fast as technology changes, it might be time just to buy new ones as opposed to repairing them, because you probably won't find the parts.
Fair. Martin?
Martin?
I make the recommendation, we move forward with this, do we need a, we can't do a motion 'cause it's...
No, I, um, I'll need a, I'll need a seven thousand, yeah, I'll need a contract, you know, I'll have to present it to them at the next meeting.
With a budget amendment.
With a budget amendment.
So, what happens if all this is approved and installed and then two months later we start remodeling this building?
The remodel hasn't happened in three years. It's not gonna happen in two months.
We don't know yet.
I did ask if we can move that, I said, yes.
So, you will take the equipment out so that the remodel can happen and then come back and put it in?
Basically, what I'm looking at is, you see the two cameras, try and put a pole down here to where you have a different angle, not this far down, but further, I mean, as opposed from way up to maybe a foot down or two feet down, to where you have a different shot of your faces.
Check the light out.
One going this way and one going this way.
Yes.
And this one back here could also serve as a document camera. Let's say you're approving a plat amendment, zoom in on the plat, any kind of document. Your, your, your imagination will be your limb.
And then the connectivity is capped by, right? That's all it's capped by.
It's internet, where we need four cables for the two cameras right now.
It's gonna draw to...
We could, in theory, have four cameras, one cable per camera.
Gotcha. Oh, my God, Becky.
That's gotta show. All right, so are we on, on track here?
I don't, uh, you, next meeting, he'll get me a contract.
That's my, my thought.
So, if you budget amendments, it'll be on your agenda for your next meeting.
If you provide, uh, Martin a contract, it'll be on our budget next meeting. Right? You're asking?
Yeah.
Right?
See, the only thing is, if it's next meeting and our cameras are out here...
I think they're talking about dire straits. No.
I can't, I can't spend five thousand dollars with this.
Well, I understand.
I agree.
We're public, we're...
We don't meet before then anyway, do we? We don't meet before then anyway. We don't meet in here before then anyway.
Dr. Meyer.
Right, but he's talking about next, next week.
And Martin, I will call, what do you need in a contract? We will get...
I need a contract from the vendor, through the city.
For the, for the two cameras.
For the cameras. That's the total cost.
We'll work on it.
We have to do a budget amendment to get the money from the general, from capital improvement fund into the general...
And the city.
But, in an ordinance, overriding this bottom line.
We'll, we'll do that and I will check with Don, see when this room is ready, plan is to switch cameras.
We don't need until the second, Thursday of January.
I mean, other meetings.
Other meetings? Yeah, right, he's got that scheduled.
Okay. Brian, anything else? What, what, Brian, you were wanting to, were you clear on, do you wanna come up with an ordinance to, for a base, you know, emergency fund?
I think we'll need to determine, I mean, which we can do at a different time, but I think we need to determine what that's gonna be, you know, whether it's, it's part Martin's recommendation or, I don't really have a...
Percentage that you...
Uh, you know, it's just whatever, I would just like to have one, so we could say, hey, this is what, this is what we want done with the emergency fund and everything else...
This is the amount you wanna reserve?
This is the amount that we wanna reserve, maybe along with a reason if that's possible, I mean, just so it's, it's known in the future, I, I mean, I don't know.
How do you want it, as a percentage of budget or just a flat dollar amount?
Well, it's just whatever we wanna do.
And what, so what information do you need to, to make that determination, so we can come into, I guess, another work session, 'cause I think we've all had it for tonight.
I mean, I'm not opposed, uh, to Mr. Toma here, what, I mean, you're, you're obviously well-versed with the budget, I mean, if, if it's, uh, go off your recommendation, I can come up with one, uh, I mean, it's gonna, I'd have to do some thinking, I don't have that number right now.
In, become my personal opinion, I mean, it's a policy decision, because I've informed you that there is no standard for city administration there, and I have researched it to determine kind of if there is a common figure, and I have discovered everything from twenty-five percent to, to the full year's operating expenses. So, you want me to make a recommendation, it's gonna be a personal opinion.
But we also want to make sure it doesn't hurt our rating either, to not have enough.
So, could we ask for an educated recommendation?
Yeah, that's somebody's...
I went to the rating agency, and I'll be glad to provide you with the information they provided to me.
Which I think you'll have, I just don't have.
I don't think so.
But I'll be glad to provide it to you.
Go ahead, tell him what, Joe.
I think if you said it's gonna be fifty percent of, uh, annual operating, uh, general fund expenditures, and, and which would be a million dollars and that's what you got the CD, you know, that you're not gonna touch anyway, uh, and, and, and you carry the, uh, another kind of cash balance in your operating account, but it doesn't have to be much, uh, you just have to show that you're not, that you're building instead of eroding it for the, for the purposes of, of the bond rating.
Gotcha.
Uh, so I'm saying...
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent plus a fat cushion, which is, you know, maybe another hundred thousand dollars or something.
And do you have any questions on that?
I do not. I do, but I'm not gonna ask it tonight.
Thank you.
Don't lose, for instance. Don't lose that.
With Ron Forest, Ron Forest!